Well, since it's already one o'clock, I'm going to start the meeting. I'm Councilor Walsh, Chairman of the Maintenance and Development City Council Subcommittee. And I can see on this Zoom call that I'm joined by Councilor Letterman, who's a member of the committee, Councilor Hearst. I spoke earlier with Councilor Fenton, who had a conflict, but wanted to be recorded on this meeting as wanting to see some positive change. And as a result of the current pedestrian deaths in the city, and this is an issue that I think, Elizabeth, you know that we've been talking about this for quite a while. Tim, you know it. Jesse, you know, we've been discussing this for quite a while in our subcommittee. But with the recent deaths, especially, you know, the death downtown of the librarian, the time has come, I strongly believe, for action and not studies. And it is my hope that as the result of this meeting, even if we don't have DPW present, we certainly can make our feelings known to them, that we need to see something tangible. We need the citizens of Springfield to see that we are taking these deaths seriously. We don't want them to committee to continue. Our hearts go out to the families. I know the Aqua Civic Association is addressing this and is concerned about this. But I want to see physical proof that they are doing something about these deaths. Even if they put up Jersey barriers, speed bumps, traffic lines, something has to be done and we have to see it. That's the reason I'm convening this meeting, looking for your suggestions. We will take them to DPW, not there, if we need, with my colleagues today. And also, Councilor Tim Allen is joining us. If we need to do something in terms of resolve or ordinance, something needs to be done to protect our citizens. And also to show them that we want something to happen, that we share their concerns. So I am going to open it up to, and thank you, Steve Carey, for joining us and running this because you have more expertise than I do. I'm going to turn it over first to Councilor Letterman, because I know this is one of your causes. And I started out the morning getting an email from a neighbor, Ambassador Hamley, who lives at the corner of Sumner and Long Hill, talking about more accidents at his property, the speeding, the poor lighting, ever soars, and asking that the DPW, something can be done to address these public safety concerns. So I will start off with you, Jesse, and we will go from there.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you for joining us from the Springfield City Library. And we are sympathy for your colleague. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Cattery. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and certainly appreciate your calling the meeting swiftly. I think that we were all, you know, deeply saddened and really honestly quite disturbed by the fatality that we saw in the last couple of weeks in front of the library, one of our beloved city employees. And we know this is the second fatality there in a number of years. Deeply disturbing for the entire community. I spoke the other day at an event sponsored by Walk Bike Springfield and Aqua. And, you know, I said at that time, what we're really looking at is an epidemic of traffic fatalities in the city of Springfield. And when we look at epidemics from a public health perspective, you know, you don't just look at the individual event and say, oh, well, they should have done this differently or they should have done that differently. You have to look at the system in its totality and what changes need to be made. So I know the neighborhood has been steadfast in advocating for changes at that site. The council has been steadfast. I'm glad to see Director Signoli on, hopefully with an update on that DOT study, because we do know, you know, we need DOT on board. So I'm just very hopeful that this study will produce some options for us to make the physical changes that are necessary to slow traffic there and protect pedestrians. And of course, a broader conversation needs to be had citywide around how we physically slow traffic, make pedestrians safer, make bicyclists safer. And I think that, you know, it's a conversation we've had at many points. But now we certainly are seeing an influx of cash from the federal government. And we need to be incorporating this into our design going forward. But what I'd really like to see out of today's meeting is an update on that study that we were promised, that people fought for for years, and which is supposed to be concluded, I understand, this month, so that we can see the changes at Lower State Street. So that's what I'm hoping to see. And also, thank you, I see some library employees on here. Thank you for being here, and we really do want to extend our condolences. We know how close many of you were with Gail, and so thank you for taking the time to be here.
Thank you, Jesse. And regarding that study, Jesse, I was under the impression that we do have had it long before now. And thank you, Jean, for coming. And Stephen, I think you're wearing two hats today because you are also part of the, aren't you on the border?
Hands off the keyboard of Zoom. That's all being handled by city council staff.
Yes, I know you're a big supporter of the libraries. So, Councilor Hearst, thank you for joining us today. And, you know, I'm really tired of studies. I want to see something concrete. That's what I want to see. Councilor Hearst.
Yeah, no, I couldn't agree with you more. And I think, you know, between you and Councilor Letterman, you've captured a lot of the things that I would have said. But I think that the bigger issue for me is not, it's not just State Street. I mean, we understand that we've had some, you know, two fatalities that I can remember at that particular intersection. Yes, that needs to be addressed without a doubt. But we need more of a comprehensive plan as to how we're going to increase public safety as it pertains to our pedestrians, as well as those who are on bikes in the city of Springfield. A number of these accidents have happened throughout the entire city. And so what I'd like to see is I'd like to see input from citizens and then have that information coalesced into some form of document, and then for us to actually take some action. I know there are some things that ought to be able to happen immediately, you know. Increase in signage doesn't cost a lot. Painting of the crosswalks, I know we're going into the winter months, so that might not be, you know, realistic now. But that should be, you know, that should be something that's a no-brainer. And so I just, you know, I think there are some things that we can do immediately in the short term that can have a large impact. I also heard from a resident who, you know, is adamantly opposed to increase patrols. And, you know, their fear, police patrols to slow folks down. And, you know, her fear was that we need to put our police officers in positions to be successful. And so the last thing that she wanted to see was neighborhoods being oversaturated with police who are in pursuit of stopping individuals who are creating, you know, who are having traffic violations. And so I'm not saying that we don't need them. I just think that they need to be part of an overall plan to reduce the number of pedestrian accidents that we've had in the city of Springfield. So I appreciate you calling the meeting, Councilor Walsh, and I agree with your sentiments as well as Councilor Letterman's.
And I don't know if I recognize Councilor Allen. Tim Allen is on Zoom call, and I'm very happy to see that you must have changed your schedule. Thank you for joining us.
No problem.
Yeah. Councilor Allen, your thoughts on where we are?
I mean, we've all been distressed by the last couple of weeks' work of worst of these road fatalities in Springfield. And I know, you know, the library one, the library area, we've all spoken about that in the past since that young girl from Brookings died there six or eight years ago, Destiny. So I would like to hear from Chris about the constraints on his end with, I mean, we've all seen raised crosswalks. We see, you know, in Long Meadow, there's a raised crosswalk where somebody was hit a few years ago. And that, there's a raised crosswalk there. And we see him in other communities. And what are the options and what are the constraints to going forward with making decisions on them? I'd like to hear from Chris. I know he has some freedom to do stuff, but there's also DOT and other organizations involved. And we're all at a point, I think, where we're, we don't want to, we don't want to see the next fatality ever, but particularly without us having taken some action.
Before we get to Chris, I'm going to, Councilor Hearst, did you?
Yeah, I did. The other thing that I forgot to mention, and, you know, I know Jesse has been a huge advocate for it, is the lighting. I've reported to Chris Signoli with respect to outages up and down State Street. At one point in time, it was about forty, between thirty and forty, traffic lights that were out. For whatever reason, only half of them have been fixed. And this is over the course of the last, I would say, at least four to five months. And I know others have been reporting these outages as well. It would seem to me that that ought to be a great start in terms of figuring out how it is that we can make our streets just a tad bit brighter and actually getting those traffic lights, whether you replace them with LED lights, which Councilor Letterman has called for on a number of occasions, or we just make sure they're actually functioning properly. So I just, I think something has to be done, Councilor Walsh.
I totally agree. Jean, did you want to make any comments from the library perspective?
Only that I'm very, yeah, I'm very, only that I'm very appreciative that we're here today and for your condolences, many of you have reached out directly. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Chris, thanks for joining us because I, you know, I think what we're looking for is an action plan. We want to do something. We want people to see that we're doing something. We want something tangible. And I want to know, what do we have to do? And I'm disappointed that no one is here from the Traffic Commission because I'm not sure. I think they might be a player in this. But I want to know, what do we have to do to get something done? And if you are, as the mayor says, the czar, let's issue some rules.
Thank you, councilors, and everybody else who's attending. Over, and just to let you know, kind of big picture stuff, whenever there is a major accident in the city or, and even including fatalities, I immediately meet with Traffic Division Police to make a determination as to at a particular location, what are the issues surrounding a particular location? You know, whether we're talking about speed, lighting, et cetera, et cetera. So on all of these, we've met with the Traffic Division on them. With regards to State Street, the last time we had met, I had mentioned the study. The study, we are meeting with the consultant next Wednesday morning. They're presenting their findings to us for the options that they are developing. So I will have that information next Wednesday, following the meeting we have on Wednesday. And then at that point, what will most likely happen is that the city will look at the various options and figure out which ones we want to do. And at that point, we would start determining whether it's something we do on our own, depending upon costs, or if it's something we turn into a different type of project, depending upon, I mean, it's probably going to be more dependent upon the cost than anything else. But we will have all that information beginning next, or following our meeting on next Wednesday with regard to the State Street area. We are also doing one at the same time for Plainfield Street in the area of Carew, where we have crossings there for St. George Church as well. So we're doing that one at the same time. Right now, PVPC is in the process of doing their study on Page Boulevard at Bercham Street. And once their findings are done there, we will, we will begin the one that will be Page Boulevard at Brookdale, so we know what will be happening there. So within the next, within the next week, I will have information regarding State Street of what is being proposed for options. And then we will have, following that, developing some preliminary layout work and figuring out what we can and can't do on our own, or if it turns into a bigger project. So I will start to have that information following our meeting next Wednesday.
And who's going to get that information? Is it going to come to the city councils? Is it going to come to Aqua? Is it going to come to the library?
It'll go, once, once we get it and look at, you know, what we decide to move forward with options, I'll share that with anybody and everybody who it needs to be shared with. We got no problem. Yeah.
Best guess, that's something that they might suggest?
That I don't know. I don't know right now. I talked with them this morning. They are finalizing their numbers and finalizing some layouts. So I don't have, they will be looking at roadway narrowing, median islands, flashing signs, clock signals, locations of crossings, all of that. So I anticipate a number of different options that are going to be presented to us.
Okay, I want to open this up for people that are on the call that would like to chime in. We have two Elizabeths, so either, either of the Elizabeths care to make a comment. Betsy? You're, I, you are muted. But Elizabeth M., did you?
Hi, I would love to. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing this, by the way.
Well, thank you so much for having me. My name is Elizabeth McHemster. I live in Springfield over on Sumner in Cozy Corner. And also, I work at the library here on State Street and was a colleague of Gail's. I very much appreciate that it so happens that the study was already underway when this horrific thing happened, when Gail was run down. And also, I really resonated with what you said, Councilor Walsh, about short-term immediate solutions. I have to say, I wasn't super excited about having tons of police pulling people over. I also resonated with what Councilor Hearst's email correspondent said. I wonder if there aren't options beyond what Mr. Signoli said about things down the stream for things like flashing barrels or even just lines of orange cones, something that slows down the speeding. The, the speed coming into and off of that light on State Street is bonkers. I know you all know this. So I just wonder if there isn't something visually that could act as a traffic calmer. I'm not a city engineer, but I, and I just want to say, although I certainly appreciate all the study and everything that has gone into the accident, and I hope will continue, having to look at those spray paint marks on State Street, marking out the crime scene every day when I go to and from work, is just, I can see my colleague Ginny nodding her head, is just like a horrific reminder. And we just need your help. So thank you so much for this meeting and anything you can do for us and our patrons in particular, because it's hard to feel like they're taking their lives into their own hands every time they come to see us. I'm, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for joining us. Those are great words. Any, okay, Virginia, yeah, thank you.
So, you know, my, my concern is that all suggestions that I have heard for improvement, keep parking over on, across the street. And really, that's, you know, so I've heard, except for like, I've heard things like, maybe we could like pave a little bit along the access road, the back access road, and that would be for employee parking. But then that's still our patrons, you know? I mean, we have sort of a lot of elderly and a lot of very small children. And it's also overflow for the parking for the museums. So, I mean, really, it's, it is not, it was an odd decision, I feel, of the city to, when they took that property, to somehow make that a parking lot and then having to cross. I mean, I don't know when that happened. But the idea of having to cross State Street and the wishful thinking that the city has thus employed, understanding apparently that, you know, the straightest line to any thing, you know? I have heard that there were traffic barrels before. But you know what? There are traffic barrels everywhere in Springfield. And, you know, I see them knocked over on a pretty regular basis. So like, traffic barrels, I don't know. That's not, it doesn't seem that that is a reasonable thing. Large gigantic signs that say, "Speed limit 30, you are doing 75." That would be great as a quick, short option. And also maybe, I mean, it would be fantastic if we could put that in the middle of State Street. But I do like the idea of if we're going to keep the parking over there, is to have a traffic island. That would save a lot, especially because as pedestrians, we can't see around cars if we have to cut through cars. Another thing that would also happen that would, I think, would help on State Street is if the lights were timed in such a way. So there's Route 202 through Holyoke, has it, that if you do 25 miles an hour, you hit every light. And if you do 26 miles an hour, you catch every light, pretty much. So I think that that would also be a way to really slow down a lot of traffic throughout the city. I'm not just looking, because I also, I live by, I live in Forest Park. And sometimes crossing Dickinson Street by my house is really also very, very dangerous, and that's only two lanes.
Right, yeah. I think those are great suggestions, and I'm really hopeful we're going to get something done. I like quick. I like your quick, short options and things. I'm not sure if there's anyone else. Stephen, you, do you want to comment or you just?
Yeah, no, I do want to comment. Several years ago with Mass DOT, and they had, they had mentioned that there's almost an exact type of road structure, which is in Hadley. And it made a lot of news when it came out, and it was a time when people were talking about safety and pedestrian, pedestrians in traffic. And I just think it's time that we have to, you know, when I say come up with a response we can live with, you know, I really mean that, that live as opposed to more traffic fatalities. And, you know, the difference of going 25, 20 or 25 miles an hour versus 35, or I've caught myself doing, one day I caught myself doing 47 coming down State Street. It's easy to do. And, you know, to speak to, you know, a couple of you, and Councilor Hearst certainly mentioned that that additional enforcement of pulling everybody over is a challenge that, you know, makes it have a bad taste in our mouth for a good reason. But I really think that the only way we can't enforce, our officers can't enforce good rules. And I think that we need to look at things, a combination of many things that are going to slow people down. That Councilor Allen mentioned that one hump in my Long Middle High School, that, you know, the first time I went over it, I had a van filled with equipment for TV stuff. And, you know, it scared the hell out of me. I was like, whoa, what is this thing? And now every time I'm in that area, I look at my speedometer. I see what I'm doing. If you go over it at the speed limit, you're fine. And I think the only way to slow people down on a slope like State Street is a physical structure. And, you know, it's, the citizens, I think, need to see some sort of a response and beat the next tragedy. You know, there will be something that happens again if we leave it like it is. And anyway, I just want to be on the record saying, let's come up with a response that people can live with.
And that, and that's exactly why we are having this meeting. I don't know. Oh, okay.
One more thing, I wanted to thank you and thank everybody for gathering. And thank you for, Chris, for, you know, marshaling the study. We're very excited to see what happens out of it, obviously, not on pincushions, but looking forward to next Wednesday.
I see that we've been joined by two people that have been very interested in this issue, very vocal, Betsy Johnson and Linda O'Connell. So if either one of you would like to join the conversation, we'd certainly welcome your comments.
Well, I apologize for being late. I got caught up with early school dismissal today and getting children. And so I apologize for not knowing what's already been said. But I think it, and most of the people here know that in terms of, yes, it's, as we mentioned on Sunday, it's the three Es. It's, it is the education and enforcement. And it's interesting that there's now the 25 mile an hour sign on the library sign at the library. Why isn't there one on the other side of the road? And if, and if we can go ahead and put up 25 mile an hour signs without having to do a speed study, why can't we put one by the school? What, you know, why can't we put them all along State Street where there are sensitive, you know, buildings, which I believe is the reason we can get away with putting one at the library without a speed study? But definitely in the block between Spring School and downtown, where MGM can get the road to be one lane in each direction, let's please make the road one lane in each direction. Or it's definitely at least one lane down the hill. And I came in on talking about barrels as a temporary solution and as a way to pilot, seeing how that works. Let's do something temporary like that to see if it works in terms of slowing down cars and, or even allowing for the room for parking, people to park. Take that extra lane and let it be parking on the, in front of a library, recognizing that it has to be, there has to be a significant buffer lane next to the cars, protected so that cars, people can get out of their cars and get, walk to the library safely. But they're just, we just need to really get thinking out of the box and do some things that I, I was in Boston for the first time in almost two years last week. And, yeah, the use of flex poles and new kinds of barriers on different streets. And now, well, even just today in today's globe, they were touting how they have just taken, made the lanes across Memorial Bridge one lane in each direction so that the bicyclists have more room on the bridge so that the bicyclists aren't on the sidewalk with the pedestrian. So, you know, things like this are being tried everywhere, so we need to get trying them.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. They're very insightful. Linda?
Sure. Thank you very much for everyone being here and thinking deeply about this. I want to say that I am obviously not a traffic engineer. We know that these problems are everywhere in our nation, any place there are cars and people. But I really want to resonate back to what Councilor Letterman said about systems and being aware of those, and what Councilor Hearst said also about making sure that everyone is seeing all of these solutions. We're counting on our, our administration to bring forward the results of this study so that no stone, we hope, is left unturned, that this, that the study will really be comprehensive and give us lots of food for thought, that it will be analyzable in terms of what actually does reduce fatalities. But overall, I want to say that downtown Springfield, on State Street in specific, to get specific about this place, this is in, it is now a red, it's a residential area that I think it has something to do with thinking about what is, is State Street now a pass-through? Or does it not actually represent a thoroughfare in a densely populated residential area where children go to school, where families walk? Betsy has pointed out that the population in the Skyview Tower, right on that corner by the library, is, what is it, Betsy? It's at least a quarter of the population of Metro Center or one-third? That it's a significant, we have many, yeah, many, many people. And I think part of, as we're thinking systemically, is the, the balance between people and traffic. And I would like us to balance and nod and lean toward the people. We're the city of homes. Let's recognize that and make it homey. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Letterman, I think you have your hand up.
Again, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on the study timeline. So through the chair, Chris, you- So through the chair, Chris, you, your indication is the study will be done, ready for presentation after your meeting next week?
It won't be a hundred percent done. What, what we will have is all of the concepts for us to review and give the consultant a go-ahead as to what the next steps we want them to do, which will just be much more detail about, um, you know, uh, I wanna say what we want, what we would wanna do for construction. So versus, you know, looking at going into amazing detail on seven or eight or nine different alternatives. We're gonna look at a handful of them and have them go forward, but the general concepts of what we were talking about can be shared at that point.
Who, who will review those and decide which ones to proceed forward with?
Uh, we will. We, uh, us with the, uh, the DPW Engineering Department with the consultant and, uh, so that we can then make a determination what we think needs, well, when we come up with what we think the solution is, as I said before, figuring out what we can do as a city versus what we do, end up doing it into a, a bigger project. My preference is not to turn this into a DOT project, simply because from a timeline standpoint, those things take forever. So I'm trying to find the best solution to be able to get it done as quickly as possible.
Well, I don't, and I don't, I wanna strike a delicate balance between seeing timely action and also making sure that what happens is, is sort of generally supported by the community. So I mean, I would like to see all of the options presented at the very least before this committee. Um, and if not through a, a, a more robust public engagement process. At the same time, like I said, we don't wanna, and we've, we've waited long enough. But we also wanna make sure if we're finally gonna see action, uh, that, you know, the public is included, the neighborhood, the librarians, the patrons. You know, I, I think that's important. So I think we should work out a way uh, for that to occur again in a timely manner. And I think that this committee and the council in general is very supportive of this. So in terms of calling meetings and getting everything moving, I don't think you'll find a hesitation on that.
I have no, I have no problem with that. And my only comment is, is that on, on the options. We wanna make sure we're doing it correctly. And I'm trying to say this with as much tact as I can. I don't want it to be a popularity contest, cuz some people look at something and say, we think this is gonna be the best thing. When from an engineering or traffic perspective, it may end up being one of the worst. So, uh, we wanna make sure that we do our due diligence. I don't have a problem presenting all of the options. But I wanna make sure that, um, um, we have had a chance to vet them to figure out what is important. And then when I say important, what is, uh, meeting what we're trying to accomplish? And, you know, doing a raised crosswalk across, uh, State Street. Some people may look at that and think it's the greatest thing in the world, where the downside that also has to be looked at. So I wanna make sure we vet it in both ways possible. And again, I have no problem making sure that that stuff gets presented. I got no issue with that.
Counselor Hurst? I'm sorry, Counselor Lederman, did, uh, did you wanna make another comment or?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, as long, I think we can just
I, I don't think this plan will be successful if we don't have citizen input, you know, from so many affected people. I, I think it's gotta be part of, uh, whatever you do, it has to be presented.
Yes.
Counselor Hurst?
Yeah, I was gonna say the exact same thing that you said. And what it also does, Chris, is it takes some of the onus off you all as an administration. I mean, you're actually, when you, when you have the community involved in the solution and for some reason it might not be the right solution, everybody was part of coming up with the wrong solution. And so at the end of the day, if you're the only one that's gonna decide what is best, something goes wrong and you're gonna be the only one that's gonna bear the responsibility for when it does go wrong. So it just, it seems to me that that should be a no brainer.
Yes.
You will, you will take heed.
Oh, no, and I got, I got, like I said, I have no problem with that. Either way, any solution that gets presented e-ends up with my stamp on it. So either way, it's my responsibility, so.
So, so walk us through this. Okay, the plan, the plan, the long wait, steady happy, there, there's, there's suggestions. Suggest the DPW that decides what's gonna happen. It doesn't go to the traffic, go to the council. Does it go to the, uh, a meeting at Classical Condominiums? You know, people wanna be involved in this. And I think, you know, after what's happened and, and, uh, the grieving, I think will certainly help with the grieving process. If, if people can be involved in this, I think that's very important. I don't wanna just read about it. I, you know, I think we all wanna be part of the solution.
Yeah, and I have, however we wanna do it from a meeting standpoint, I'm happy to do it anyway. I prefer in person.
Sure.
You know, I, 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 I just like that. So if we could, if we could do that, I got no problem with that.
Perfect.
And what I'll be able, what I'll do is following our meeting on Wednesday, I can put together something to share with the counselors just from a timeline standpoint and how we wanna share stuff. So I got no problem with that.
Okay, yeah, and I didn't mean to cut you off, Counselor Hurst, especially since you agreed with what I was saying.
No, I, I actually, Elizabeth M., um, and I, I apologize, I, I do not know your last name, but she actually jogged my memory as to what it was that I, that I wanted to ask Chris. Chris, one, uh, from a timeline standpoint, uh, I, I know you don't necessarily have what is being proposed yet. But if it's going to take a while, which I suspect that it might, is there anything that you can think of doing temporarily, uh, and not just at State Street? But, but possibly throughout the city. I don't, I don't know if you've been kicking around some ideas in terms of just trying to control, um, you know, the speed of traffic in general. But if you could just start with State Street and then maybe give us more of a broader perspective.
Actually, Counselor, I'll go opposite to that. I'll kinda go bigger picture and then talk about State Street. On Wilberham Road, uh, in the area of AIC. In the spring, there will be a construction project where there is a roadway narrowing and a raised crosswalk installed at, uh, Massachusetts Avenue. We actually wanted to start that construction this fall, but materials aren't available. That will have a hawk beacon at that location. As part of applications that we are now doing to Mass DOT on Bernie Avenue in the area of Herena School, there will be a raised table installed in front of the school. We're debating now, uh, with Mass DOT as to whether or not we wanna do some, uh, narrowing there. The road's two lanes and once you get past the school, obviously, it's a little bit of a speedway. So we're trying to figure out how to carry that through a little bit farther. And dealing with them on traffic coming off the on-ramp or off-ramp, excuse me, cuz right now when you come off the on-ramp, you're in your own lane and you can just you know, go thirty, forty miles an hour and keep going. So in front of the school, there will be a raised table. In, um, applications that we are putting together now with Mass DOT for some safe routes to school stuff in and around Rebecca Johnson School. I don't have the exact locations, but there's gonna be a handful of those involved, uh, installed as well on some certain areas. Mass DOT is designing that and we haven't seen the preliminary layout of that yet. But we, we're gonna be reviewing that. The second one that we are doing is safe routes to school around, um, Washington Street School. So we will be looking at installing, uh, pavement narrowing on, I wanna make sure I got my streets right, on Dickinson near Fountain and on, uh, Belmont at Itendale and Woodlawn. Woodlawn, yeah, Woodlawn. Looking into doing raised crosswalks, beacons, et cetera, in those locations. So kind of, uh, branching off of those. We also look at, uh, we're gonna be looking at other intersection projects. The DPW, we finished up Bay and Berkshire, uh, from a design perspective. We based, finished, um, Berkshire Cottage in Harvey. It's under construction. So our next step, uh, is looking at other locations and projects with Mass DOT of a bigger scale, looking at intersection projects, things like, uh, St. James, uh, St. James, Dartmouth, Worthington, uh, Tapley in St. James is going to be a roundabout. I'm not. I have my, I have my concerns, but, uh, that's what we're moving forward with on that. So moving back to State Street, uh, when I start to get the information from the consultants next week, I want to, I think one of the things that we wanna look at, for example, if one of the things is discussing about, uh, roadway narrowing, we would do some, uh, installation for road diets, uh, in certain areas. And it's, you know, we've done it in a couple of different places throughout the city over the years. One of the big ones a few years ago was Forest Park Avenue. We tried it there. It did reduce speeds. It never got installed on Forest Park Avenue cuz nobody wanted it in front of their house. So, but on, you know, uh, State Street, that's a little bit of a different story. So looking at the downtown area at this point, and when I say downtown, basically, um, my opinion from say Commerce Town is looking at that area and if we're gonna be looking at some road diets, we would definitely, before we would design and construct anything, I think we would look at, you know, temporarily installing barriers and seeing what would happen out there. Because I think, you know, one of the things that we would wanna be able to show people, and when I say show people, both drivers and residents and businesses there is that, okay, when we do this, this is what the result is gonna be. And when we build something in the ground, it's hard to go back and get rid of it. So, you know, how do, how long do you make tapers? How long do you do this sort of thing? So, uh, you know, and on a road like State Street with the amount of bus traffic, what do we need to do for pull-offs? What do we need to do to get people out of the way? If we're gonna be loading and unloading on buses, be able to keep traffic flowing. Because that bus route, uh, uh, State Street, I can't remember how many bus routes are on there, but there's a, there's a lot of them. So we would be doing whatever we would probably propose would end up being some temporary work that would, you know, whether we're talking about barricades or Jersey barriers or barrels or whatever, uh, we would definitely be doing that.
Okay, I see some more, uh, hands raised. Elizabeth M., Elizabeth McKinstry, did you wanna make a comment?
I, I did. I, I appreciate what I'm hearing around not wanting to do something hasty and wanting to be sure it's the right solution and waiting for the study. And, and I don't want to discount the expertise involved in these things that are, that are that are based on studies, right, that are data-based. At the same time, I'm really not hearing anything that is gonna happen in the super short term. And so I guess what I'm asking is, is the answer no, that you're refusing to do something in the immediate term for State Street? Because I, I, I just wanna hear someone actually say that. Are you saying no, there is nothing we will do in the next couple of weeks to help with speeding on State Street?
I know what the proposed solutions would be. I don't wanna put something out there that then ends up gonna get a change two weeks later. So I wanna see what the solutions are and if it's determined that we are looking at roadway modifications, narrowing, that sort of thing. I wanna know where we are talking about to be able to do that. So I want, do I wanna do something in the short term? Yes, something will happen in the short term before we would do construction, but I wanna be able to see that information.
Well, I have to agree with, with my neighbor who I didn't know was my neighbor. I wanna see something tomorrow, uh, even if it's a wooden horse or if you put up, you know, those signs that you have, you're going so twenty-five miles an hour. We need, before this study, something needs to be physically seen before the study. I mean, e-even if you paint something, an, an action has, has to be taken. And, and I don't know where that comes from. We have to go to the Traffic Commission. If the City Council can pass a resolution saying we want some sign that we realize there's a problem here and we wanna protect our patrons and our pedestrians. But I, I feel very strongly like, like the rest of the females on this call.
I was gonna add, I had posted the question.
The DPW.
Look, I have a question. My question to the DPW is, can twenty-five mile an hour signs be posted without a speed study if they're by, so you know, um, like churches, in front of every school, every church, every senior center? Can that be done or, or at least just have to go to the Traffic Commission? Or does it need a speed study, Chris?
No, what, what I was, I have that note written down that I'm going to look at what we already have because there's, there's speed data. That we already have as part of the original design on there. So I need to look at that and figure out if, with, where, I agree with you, Betsy, yes, we can install some. I need to figure out where we can do it. So
Okay.
I don't, do not wanna do a speed study, that's for sure.
But we could at least put those check your speed signs.
Yes.
That I know when I hit Worthington Street down the hump after, um, uh, I guess it's Armor Magazine, uh, that always slows me down going up on Worthington. The check your speeds and I really like Cater, Cateri's idea, let's just paint in the street, slow down. You know, I mean, those don't take, those aren't prohibited by anybody, like from the federal government or Mass DOT. I don't believe, um, at least the check your speed signs could be posted. And yes, I mean, I know it's a matter of working with the police to get the electronic, um, speed detection signs or even just one of the permanent type. They do only cost, I understand is they only cost fifteen hundred dollars. The permanent ones that are just show flash the speed you're going.
Yeah, we have, we, uh, I can't remember the cost. We, there are three of them in East Springfield that have been installed in the last year.
My, my understanding, they said they cost fifteen hundred dollars each cuz the Neighborhood Association paid for them.
For some reason, I wanna say there were more, but not that much more. Uh, but yeah, they got them through a grant. They got them through a grant.
Okay, uh, I think, um, I think, uh, Stephen, I'll go to you after Counselor Lederman's hand is up.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was just gonna say, Chris, some of the, um, temporary measures you described sound like things that would take place, you know, as precursors to, you know, some sort of, sort of trial run after the study. But I think what people are looking for is, is a, is a truly temporary and immediate reaction. So can you answer the question relative to the installation of check your speed signs in real time, uh, barrels somewhere? Just to, just to show people that they, that there's, there's enforcement going on there, that there is, there is reason to slow down. Can, can that be done? Cuz I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
No, the, and, and in general, no, I don't have a problem. Signage, things like that. What I wanna make everybody aware of, for those of you who, uh, three, four months ago, West Springfield with the state decided to do something on Route five.
Yeah.
Next day, there's a fatality there. Because it was one of those, let's throw something out there to get it done. And now everybody is scrambling. It's, where was the study? Did anybody review this?
But they are going to narrow Route five at that, they have, my understanding is they've decided they actually are going to narrow Route five.
Right, well, I, I, I understand that, Betsy. When they did the temporary stuff, they did it without any, um, I, almost like they threw it out there type of thing. And that's what I wanna avoid. I just don't wanna throw something out there that is going to also cause something. So it has to be thought through if you're, if, you know, one of the problems that I have with the stuff in West Springfield is you were driving two lanes going southbound at, at McDonald's. They didn't have, there wasn't any advanced signage. So all of a sudden a tractor trailer just is in the right lane going forty miles an hour and just plows through everything. So that's what I, I need to figure out is that if we're doing barrels, if we're doing cones, if we're doing something that you have enough taper distance, you have enough signage, you have enough advanced warning, that is not just as simple as throwing out a barrel. Because people who are driving on that road at an appropriate speed, now all of a sudden have to do weaving and get from right lane to left lane as well as buses, as well as that. So you have to do that taper, you know, per standards and get it done. So just throwing something out there to do it is something I'm against. I want it to be as thought through as possible so that if anything happens out there, we are all protected. And the idea of just throwing something out for the sake of doing it with, and seeing if it works is not something that I really wanna do without any thought on it and then, you know, opening up too many people to liability issues. Cuz right now, uh, you know, going through all this stuff, we do something temporary, we're good. And I know that problem in West Springfield is gonna be a huge issue over the next two, three, four weeks or two, three, four months, excuse me, with all the stuff. So yes, we wanna do it. Uh, but I don't wanna throw something out today and then also two weeks later decide, hey, we don't wanna do it that Uh, but I don't want to throw something out today and then also two weeks later decide, hey, we don't want to do it that way. We're going to do it this way. And now all of a sudden, you're moving everything around. So I also need to make sure.
I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind to throw something out today, even if you take it down in in two weeks. We are asking for immediate, direct ans- answers. Uh, Stephen, you had um, a comment you wanted to make. Uh, I think you're muted though, Stephen.
How about now?
Hey, hey, focus, focus is muted.
Hey, um, with, Council Letterman basically said, covered most of the area I wanted to say, but I also wanted to kind of paraphrase Linda O'Connell and say that, you know, um, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, but here I am playing one on Zoom. Uh, and, you know, my thought is that, um, I think, Chris, listening to that laundry list that you went through was was great. It really made me feel better about the city and overall care of pedestrians in traffic situations. And I think the more we can gather and and, you know, Counselor Walsh, if this is a snowball that gets rolling and keeps rolling, um, I think, Chris, more opportunities to lay out what's been proposed is just good. I don't know about the rest of everybody, but I feel better having listened to what you said. And there's obviously a lot of us pushing you really hard. And this is a tough time, but I'm I'm thankful you're here.
Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. And and Chris, um, I guess as it pertains to some sort of temporary structure, um, I, I would just like to rely on your expertise. Uh, I certainly understand that we don't want to put something up and then take it down a couple of weeks later. That that makes perfect sense. And we also want something that is not going to cause uh, more um, accidents or fatalities. So I, 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 I am with you. Um, I guess my, my only concern is that we, we, you have to think it through, which I get, and I'm all for it. I just don't want that time period in which you think it through to be the same timeline in which you get the permanent, uh, you know, some of the, some of the permanent things from the study that you end up doing. And so it'd be nice if we could at the very least hear a timeframe in which you might be able to think through what you can do in the, you know, very near future. Uh, I think that might help appease some folks.
And and I think I will have a good answer on that next Wednesday, when I see what being, what's being proposed. Yeah. Uh, I will, then I'm knowing what's going on, then we can figure something out uh, to be able to do it. So and then I gotta, you know, also take into account winter and all that good stuff with plowing and.
For sure. So Ma- Madam Chair.
I'm gonna get yelled at for anyway, so.
It, it, that, that is true. It might make sense to have a follow up meeting uh, after Wednesday, um, just to kind of see where Chris is at in terms of uh, some temporary things that he can do.
Yeah, and I would, what I would suggest is after that, what I'll, after that meeting, I'll send around an email to uh, to the counselors and anybody else who would, who would like, who you'd like to share it with, uh, so that we can put that timeline together. I got no problem with that. So if it's next, I'm just, that's, I was just looking at my calendar here. Uh, oh my God, it's December 1st already. So uh, that was what we're meeting. So when I have that, I'll send around, we can do that, you know, within the next week. That shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
Uh, Linda, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge, um, Chris, the tremendous responsibility for public safety that is on your plate and the tight ropes, the eggshells you're walking on, all of those things. And I heard you very clearly when you said, um, your fear of a popularity contest around solutions. And I, I, I think, I, I hope you can have the confidence in a deep-thinking, well-considering council and also public who don't want you to make any rash and silly decisions, that we do understand all of the stakes here and how complex this is. And we are around this process being the right process that comes to the right conclusion. So, um, I just wanted to acknowledge what you're looking at and all of the, uh, all of the things that you are balancing and know that we are rooting for this process to go very well. And and we're part of, hope to be part of that solution, not just silly people choosing what we like best. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Linda. Thank you.
I, I don't think any silly suggestions have been made at this meeting. And Chris, I want to, um, mention another area, uh, I received, and I think you did, I don't know if you were able to get it, uh, uh, an email from Ambassador Hamley, another trouble spot, Sumner and Long Hill Street.
Yes, I got that this morning.
And I'm hoping that those issues there, because that, there's always something happening there. Uh, people going too fast and uh, and and I'm hoping that we'll, we'll be able to address that problem for them uh, in that area.
Yep.
Well, and Walk By Springfield has given Andy Carr a long list of what we feel are all the uh, trouble spots across the city, which are no, no surprises to him. So I mean, you can go down to the bottom of that street and you have your Locust Mill, Long Hill mess and, you know, let's, we get, unfortunately, um, we're in a gen, we're looking at having to change a generation of or multiple generations of different kinds of road designs. Um, and uh, want it all done yesterday. So but and uh, uh, appreciate the fact that we're, it was my, my comment to Street Law yesterday. Sometimes it, uh, it feels like we're Sisypheus rolling up the hill, but we are definitely making progress. So it's, uh, uh, we're, we're just really pleased with how things are going.
And and I think it's almost 2 o'clock. We like to keep these meetings to an hour. I think this, this has been a fabulous meeting, great, great input from, from so many different people. And again, you know, to, to the library staff who joined us, you know, you know, our deepest sympathies and none of us want to see a repeat of anything happening there. But I still want to see something, even if it's a wooden barrier in the middle of State Street. Uh, bef- before we pu- incorporate all these studies. So, uh, happy Thanksgiving and we will be back next week. Thank you all.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So Stephen, does this just end or do I have to do anything?
No, you're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.